For commissioners to hold a public hearing on the purpose of discussion of C D V G funding. For M I neighborhood elder home repair program. Public comments on that. Public comment going twice. Public comment three times, no public comment, close public comment. And no, follow order or meeting.
Close public hearing.
Oh, cool, public hearing, okay. Now we open our regular meeting, follow order. I think we should do that first time too.
That's fine.
We're good. Roll call.
Mister Caparosa, Commissioner Livermore, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner Rondo, Commissioner Seabird.
Here. Please public comment. Anybody got a public comment? Once. Place. Both public comment agenda. Uh, we have one change on I and J to be approved. Uh, before both of those sentences. I and J? Yep, on I and J. And you want to make a vote on that?
Yes, please.
Roll call.
You got a motion?
We got a motion on that, uh.
Change.
I'll support. Roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good. Moving quickly, you know, consent agenda, any questions on it? Is there a motion? I'll make a motion, we accept it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes, do they have a chance to look at the minutes, anything wrong that they seen?
I just browse them.
It's good to me, too.
Make motion and set the minutes.
I'll support. All in favor? Aye.
Thanks.
Close none. Amanda, you're up.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Probably a few of you that don't know me, my name's Amanda Storm, I'm the executive director of the Drop-In Town. I took over as executive director two years ago. Then the drop-in center was running, they closed down for being fully surrounded without a director. We started with twenty-three members. And currently, we have eighty members of the drop-in center. Um, the drop-in center, we are safe haven, safe place. Um, free of judgment, stigma, guilt, shame of living with mental health diagnosis. We have um, less than five percent living with co-inocuring, which means they have a substance or alcohol addiction as well. But out of, out of that majority has been a recovery for eighteen months to fifteen weeks. So essentially, this place, it is a second home for people, it's a second home for me, spent almost sixty hours out of my week there. And we are very confidential, um. We don't share anything outside of the drop-in, anything that's said there stays, stays there. And what you see right here is a portion of our members, their family and friends that are willing to show up here in person. And uh, support what, what I'm about to say today. So um, we are federally funded through Medicaid. And what you may know is a big beautiful bill is set to take effect January first. That will privatize mental health services, substance use. As well as eliminate the violence against uh, violent crimes against women's act. So we're gonna lose a lot of really great things in our community that we need and people in this room need to survive. Um, our members, uh, specifically this one member, um. Has uh, generalized anxiety disorder, borderline social anxiety disorder, severe depressive disorder. Obsessive compulsive personality disorder, trauma and PTSD. Last five years has been really tough for them, and being a member of the drop-in has allowed them to escape their house. Be more social, visit with friends, and this person is well-educated, graduated high school, has a bachelor's. Has had several careers, now has a family, this day. In my opinion, a pillar of their community, they, they volunteer in uh, youth activities. Who drives, different things around town, um. That member is me. So for my members to see someone living. For the members to see someone. Living with a struggle. Um, you know, that stigma, um, all anybody that goes to the drop-in, it's crazy. Like I tell you, only the good ones are okay. We're, we're a family. And um, this past year, we learned about assertiveness, difference between aggressive, being aggressive and being assertive. And what we learned is no was, was a complete sentence. Unfortunately, I'm here to completely squash that because we're not gonna take no. Um, if the big beautiful bill goes into effect, it will jeopardize our funding. We will have to close doors. And a portion of my eighty members and their family and friends that you see in this room will have nowhere to go. Uh, we're run on peer support. So I'm a certified peer support specialist with the state of Michigan, basically, that's a really fancy word, it is. I've dealt with the same stuff that they've dealt with, and I know how to walk them through it, how to get them to the next step. Now, and without that, I, I fear, I hate to make assumptions, but I fear arise and things that you see coming out of your county jail. And that's not the place that I want, you know, I wanna see for Elder County. Um, currently, Pathways is our liaison. They oversee um, my day-to-day financials. Fortunately, um, the current budget that they have set for us, for even our essentials, is. Three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-nine cents below what we need. We've been running off of an eighty-six thousand dollar yearly budget. Um, which is comparatively low, if you look at what the county spends on substance use treatments for inmates coming out of county jail. Um, and they're not judged there. Uh, in the last two years, I've seen people who socially isolated, I'm in five times a week. I've seen people who are advocate addicts. Get clean, go to halfway houses and come back, I have them a lot happier. Um, so essentially, I'm here to ask for help. We need help.
Thank you. What was the deficit number again? I missed the deficit number.
Um, for uh, incidentals is three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. The current budget covers, barely covers rent, utilities, um, payroll, accounting, insurance. Um, that doesn't include our activities, um. Background checks for volunteers, those are we, they're essentials, fair.
If, if I could add commissioners, the, I've gotten the privilege of getting to know what this organization's all about over the past few years. And it's floored me. We, we watch the news and whenever a tragedy happens, everybody says, mental health, it was mental health, mental health, mental health was issue. These individuals live it and they practice what they preach. And I'm not overstating it when I say that they are a very positive. Thing, especially as it relates to public safety in our community. I mean, they don't know, but they're law enforcement officers, every one of them. And um, and I, and I say that in all sincerity. Uh, because the vibrancy associated with how they approach their community in such a positive way. It, it makes me sleep better at night anyway. Um, knowing that there's a place where we can go, people can go to um, you know, just hang out if they want to. And not be alone. And when we see these things on TV, these tragedies on TV, that's almost universally something that is associated with tragedies that will be in this component. So um, I think that this definitely should be referred to committee, um, our opioid committee. Or some other such funding that the county, the county should offer support wherever possible.
Do we have, I mean, is this under the eligibility of our opioid?
Some of the stuff that they do would fall under that. Um, I believe so. And that's part of the reason that I did ask her is because she knows some of the closest things that we need, the people in our community and what they need. Because that's what our money wants to go towards, not just what nationally, what they think. Um, I'll just say, um, from a personal kind of stance here, that before. Amanda took over, um, I wouldn't say that many people sought highly of the drop-in center. Like she said, it was kind of just where the crazy would go, nobody really knew who could go there, what they did, not much of it. Since she's taken over. Not only does the community now know what it is, she's invited us in Halloween, she does little things, she also to make. Things happen for the members, she's asked for donations, she's asked for smallest thing, the help yarn. I donated yarn because she wanted to do art crafts and projects and stuff, so the community then helps to make things happen so that, because they just don't have the budget for it. Um. I think that seeing what she said two years ago with the members and currently shows. Our nation saying that we have a mental health crisis and knowing that we have that many people in our community that. Gotten that help and are there, you know there's more. And if we can help build that and build more support, I'm a hundred percent for it.
I think that someone should bring to our opioid committee.
Yeah. And then just anything, I mean, I don't know.
I think that's the only avenue that we would have funding is see out of that. So we should have done it for October sixth.
Yeah.
The first one, so if I can get. Uh, the proposal before, we can pass it through Amy Delinki at MAC, she can run through it, it has to be one hundred percent. Um, substance abuse, opioid remediative. Um, and which, if she signs off on it, then it would be completely eligible for opioid settlement funds. But if you can get it to me beforehand, then we can pass it through that committee, get everything done at that first committee, so my recommendation would be. This, this three thousand seven hundred and eighty-six, I guess would be the ask for through the end of this year. And then if you could do, uh, just to get it done, uh, uh, twenty twenty-six. And I'm, I'm foreseeing that you're, you're, you're seeing a shortfall for next year too, so maybe we could hammer it out at the same time and. Do we even have to, state didn't have a budget for next year, even that. No, but we do, right, so we will have to. I mean, for them to know what their budget is next year, we don't know what. Do we? Like, we can, yeah. We do.
Sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
What kind of shortfall are you looking at next year? Thirty grand?
And say it looks like almost.
To keep, keep it up, uh, running about eighty-six with the odd activities, some mental health workshops.
We don't have that, so.
Is eighty-six thousand is what we'll be, we need. And I was very nervous, and so when they were crashing early, um, but a really good thing to take into account too is. People who um, attend the drop-in and receive peer support services, their occurrence to therapy decreases by eighty percent. So that's less money we're putting in to um, maybe. Because if we're saving it from each other.
So again, I would say, if you can put together the FY twenty-six numbers, so we know exactly, laid out in the proposal, we're in the. Whatever we, we can submit, because we still have to determine how much we're going to distribute per year, right, or. I don't get that much, like it says, the downfall, we're not gonna be able, and no, we're not gonna be able to do thirty thousand dollars, for sure.
Um, what?
It's gotta get.
Does the county even themselves have as far as funds towards mental health? Do we know how much we have in our budget for that, or do, like, I know Pathways receives so much and that. And they're supposed to give so much to them, is like, all of our monies go to them and then they?
North Care, we do half the liquor, uh, tax, which is about what, twenty-five thousand? And then they, the pathways appropriation, yeah, which is another.
A lot.
Forty-eight, forty-nine? Eighty-three oh five times four, so, yes.
But there may be, is the message then that there may be creative solutions with emphasis on maybe.
Right.
Creative solutions going forward that could assist in a entity like this in our community.
Yeah, because I mean, we have LMS and Pathways, you know, are, you know, two things that we pay so much into. And those are kind of bigger, but this is something that would be in our community, a staple of our community for many, many, many years. And if we find a way to put a little bit in our budget, especially because of everything they do. Is that some, that I guess I'm just.
Yeah, I don't know if we can afford, you know, the thirty thousand dollars.
Well, not even that, I'm just saying, like, anything that we can kind of put in, if this is something that we've created in our community that the county. You know, supports and does, I think that that's something that we can look forward to and look into.
But the need right now is three thousand seven hundred, right?
Yeah, we're still good.
Currently, we're, we're good through this fiscal year.
Okay.
But that's how much you felt for it this year, the fiscal year starts on October first.
So annually, how much did you say it was? I thought it was eighty-six.
Yep, eighty-six thousand.
That's what we've been running on the past two years.
Next year, there's gonna be a thirty thousand dollar shortfall, we got cut. I think the big thing is like Joel said, due to is get your, all your information into us, so we can send it to MAC and see if you're even eligible. If we can give you money out of that. That's the first. Yeah, and if. I can forward you the, uh, the breakdown, you know, if it's treatment, recovery. You know, the, the seven, six or seven different categories that they have it, and as specific as you can be about, you know, the educational side of it, the treatment side of it, and break it down. So if one piece is not eligible and it can't be covered, that, yeah, maybe we can still cover the other four or five or six pieces. I think administrative there too, isn't there, of it? Could be some kind of administrative percentage that they can take for administrative costs. We said we're gonna do one hundred percent of it to remediate, you know. No, yeah, but I mean, on their end, when they're. Oh, wages, yeah, wages do count as a, as eligible expense, yeah, yeah.
That's what I said. Our assumption operating cost.
Yeah.
We do that.
We, yeah, at least we asked that last time. That's why I wanna bring that up, that's, make sure that's in there.
Right. That it?
This is.
Thank you, Amanda, and guests? My question is, do you need it immediately, thirty-seven?
I know it's possible.
Okay.
No.
You're good through January.
And I do have to say that it looks great, the place looks great, uh, the favorite.
It smelled good.
Um, right next to auto value, there's auto value and then there's like an apartment upstairs, but right next to it, they just redid the outside of it and the inside looks great. And it just, it's welcoming looking, very much.
Seems like a very good endeavor here.
You're welcome to visit anytime, except for tomorrow, we're going to Oswald Fairbridge.
Back on?
Yes.
We need a background check first though.
May. Okay, nine, discuss suspending our board policy, vote on appointment for district one commissioners at the October committee. Of the whole and affirm at the regular course meeting.
Yeah, because we're not sure we're gonna have everybody at the regular board meetings.
I won't.
You won't be here and with him after September, end of September, he's no longer.
Right.
Here, so we need.
Three.
We need to make sure the three of us.
Right.
But if we're here at the hole, we could count.
I'll be here on that day, that Monday.
So that's what we'd like to do is to vote on it on the first meeting and then pass it on the second, or just reaffirm it, yeah.
Right, well, what if on the second, we don't have it? You don't have the three.
You'll have, it'll be on a consent agenda, right, so you've already voted, as long as nobody changes their mind and, and votes against the consent agenda to pull that piece off.
Showing up.
Well, then you have a quorum anyway.
Well, if you did vote it on the.
We don't do any of this one, you'll have the three because you already voted them in. Yeah, and then they can take the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we just vote on the first one.
Yeah, that's what we wanna do.
And not confirm it the second.
No, we can vote on it the first.
On the.
Yeah.
Then he will, he'll take the office on the, on the regular meeting then, after the meeting of the whole?
I would say. You could, could take the seat immediately after the vote.
Yeah, okay, okay, yes.
And then we have her, she. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm. They can take the seat.
Yes, I'll get rid of the um, the firm at the regular meeting, just to.
We usually do.
October.
We usually affirm votes that we've taken at the, yeah.
But we can't, if there's.
They're already taking the seat.
Huh?
If, if.
Oh, if he already took his seat, then he can vote on the permit.
We even passed that we voted and.
Yeah.
Alright, then I'm not gonna be here, so whatever you wanna do.
You're affirming the vote, yeah.
It'll be on the consent agenda that we all voted and we'll confirm the consent agenda at the regular meeting, so it'll be affirmed that it was done.
Yeah, and you'll probably have four people in.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on number nine?
Nope, I'm done.
Your motions?
I'll make a motion to vote for the new commissioner at the committee of the whole meeting.
Uh, when are these uh, applications supposed to begin?
Uh, October third.
That's. Before.
That's the Friday before the committee.
Okay. So is there any way we could get? To the commissioners before the whole, meeting of the whole?
Yeah, they'll be at the committee.
Committee.
They're gonna be do that Friday before the Tuesday's committee, so you'll see all the letters of interest at the.
Well, it's right, that's Tuesday, okay, yeah.
And then the following Monday.
I'm thinking a week ahead, sorry about that.
You're good.
You had a motion? Oh, I'll second it, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close none, okay, any unfinished business?
None.
Resolutions, maximize resolution approving applicant for committee development block grant. C D V G for housing rehab and authorizing some middle of the M I neighborhood grant application to the Michigan. State housing development authority. That's a lot. Any questions on that? I do, I have one. When do we get our person?
October first, she said, right, so.
Does she have a person's name? Okay. Any other questions? Make the motion, we gotta do a motion, everything on that?
And a roll call, please.
Okay. Do we have a, a office for that person right now? Okay.
Ready.
There we go.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll support, roll call.
Commissioner Livermore, Commissioner Rondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird.
Yes. Committee reports.
How was it happening?
Most of my committees are the third and fourth weeks of the month, and so.
If I remember.
Yeah, I.
I was long-winded last week, I had nothing to say.
I haven't, I haven't been to one, well.
I mean, since last week.
I talked about the uh, VA and going on there. But I have no, I don't.
I have materials management this uh, Thursday, so if you had any questions, you can move into the booth so I can get that. Get those taken care of at the meeting.
Yeah, take that on.
Well. Summarize, didn't you learn how to do that in school? Summarize paragraph.
Yeah, hard time typing.
You have to speak to text.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't.
Well, we do now.
No, excuse me.
I have not been correspondence, we got any correspondence?
Board comments? Kelly, anything, hello?
Um. This is supposed to be Rick's last week, but I said what I said last week.
Yeah.
Otherwise, um, I would stand to say that I a hundred percent. Think that we should support to get away drop-in center, I think that that's an amazing thing for us in the county to have.
Well, I'll agree with that, I uh, just want, uh, there's a whole number of cuts coming down, I showed you that there and uh. Like you said last week, uh, MAC is claiming that um, uh, revenue sharing is gonna lose fifty-three million dollars in counties. So we better be, we better start preparing. And pay back. Don't spend so long. Yeah, you said harp of money and. When they're like jumping sailing. Yep. That's all I have. I have nothing to leave, do you have anything?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out, appreciate it, and then, like I said, if you can just get me everything you can, over the next couple of weeks, we can back and forth and get it. Ready to go, yeah.
Mine would be, I, I've talked, I have one idea, I'll talk to Kelly about later, after the meeting, maybe, I have an idea, so. But I agree, it's a good thing to, oh.
Well, I found out there's eighty people, I mean, that seems like a small number, but it's not for this community, that's a lot of people, one percent. So um, thank you for all that you do for us, everybody.
Sheriff? Eighty-six thousand. Oh, you're not here, fine. Free public comment? Anybody else in public? Now, please.
I think we have really all the most fond duty, I am a member of the Drop-In Center. I like to say, this establishment, this clique, the group that was formed there, saved my life twenty years ago. I was there about two weeks after they first opened up. Since then, I have gone through two other life-changing events that have made life pretty rough. If the individuals at the center, and I'm a big hail out to Amanda, weren't there, you'd probably be looking over a stone right now. It's a place where you can have your mind cleared, safe when you walk in the door. You don't have to worry about anything behind you. It's a placey, you can get grounded. And any assistance that you could possibly have and available to an individual in need in this country. Amanda Storm can find it and link you to it. And back it up, ensure that you follow through. You're having problems. Great place. I don't know what I'd do if it was closed. I've been going there for twenty years. Put a lot of time into it. Just to make it better for anybody and everybody that comes in. When I heard that it's a possibility, the door is closing. Cold chill, cold chill. Like, where am I gonna go? I'm a very unique individual. I've got an IQ that meets Einstein, I present very stupid, but I catch everything, don't miss nothing. But I catch everything, don't miss nothing, and I have an magnetic mind. It's a place for me and many others. A lot of other people out there that have yet to walk through that door. They come by and look and ask, but they're afraid. Every once in a while, you get a nibble. They come in, the membership has gone up. The activities that are held and how the place is run now is probably the cleanest and outright. Operation. If you could call it that. For us uniques is what we are considered, because we all individually unique in every manner, shape, form. And our ideals. Diagnosis, you might say. I hope that somehow you can find some help for us, keep these doors open. For the other people that are coming behind me. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I am a newer resident, I'm in San Francisco, a few months ago, I walked in the drop-in center. Solely as a volunteer opportunity, I'm going to school for social work. I walked in the door, Amanda automatically was, hello, how you doing, who are you, you know, she's a sweet, sweet lady, she works so hard. She knows things that she's not, her job title's not even there for, she sits down with people all day, listens to them, talks with them. She's such a safe place, when I walked in the doors, she was there for me. And I said, I need, I need this, I need this, she's like, okay, I'll throw you in there, any place you need to be. She runs her support groups, I facilitate one there now, um. Even after the fact that I no longer need the volunteer hours, I'm still there, every, every day there, um, but yeah, she's amazing. She does so much for the community here and it's just amazing what she does, I just wanna put that in there. She's such a help to everybody, for me, she helped me, I'm here the group and we started that group and it's helped me tremendously, so.
Anybody else?